Go for it.
Yeah, so I think we need to talk a little about the changes to chapter 56, some of the previous meetings, and we're just looking to go ahead and move forward with that. Most of these changes are dealing with the way we treat the perimeter landscaping. I think the language itself has always really pointed to the way that we treat it now with some of the illustrations, like one you saw on the ride was in some places a little bit of conflict with that, so we're just streamlining that to be more straightforward for developers as we go into this, you know, design. So outside of that, I think there were one or two changes to the suggested planting list that we want to make, one being moving the brat from there.
Making it not a...
Recommend it be planted, right. But we, yeah, so probably anyways, just say more, make that change, but outside of those two things, I think that's about it, pretty straightforward, so.
Well, we're going to do set this up for the public hearing in December, so it can go to council on the 8th of December, be ready to go into effect up to the first of the year unless you guys have reason you couldn't do it that quickly.
Austin, I asked you this last time, is there a basic definition to landscaping? Does it have to be vertical? Can it be just grass? Can it be decorative stones?
Well, when it comes to perimeter landscaping specifically, it's asking for a specific set of shade trees.
Okay.
From that list, so yes, it would be something that is vertical.
Okay.
It also has a minimum planting size in terms of vertical height and in the caliber of a tree at the time it's planted, which is, I think it's eight feet vertically and then two foot, or two inches for the caliber on the tree.
All right, good.
Yeah.
It also functions as a screening requirement, so it has to have, to me, those requirements.
Sure.
But there's nothing that says you can't use gravel around trees and stuff like that to, for any of your planting zones, is there? Or does it have to have gravel in?
No, no, a lot like Casey's, very often uses gravel in some way, you know, as long as...
Cut down on maintenance and that kind of stuff.
Right, and honestly works well.
Good.
Yeah. Any other questions?
That should help cut down on some of the kinds of...
Right, what we're trying to do is things that we see lots of variances for, we're trying to go back and address. Either it needs to be clarified, or there needs to be changes made, so we don't have to address that so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. We met with the council last night, committee to go over the recommended conversions for zoning, there wasn't any issues with that, so it's moving forward council next week. What we need to do is upgrade, update the land use plan and the master street plan to include those areas on the land use plan, because as you can see, there's a hall in the zone where it's, so on the table you have the existing land use plan, and what we need to do is look at how we want to incorporate that area into our land use plan, because it has to be covered as own, that, you know, as part of the state requirements. So looking at this area, I think the areas along 71, we would continue that commercial development, that commercial land use plan all the way through those. Now, the question, when you get up into that area where the city hall is on that, whatever the name that street is, Lincoln that comes down through there, there's a group of houses and stuff in there, do we want to separate that out as if to remain residential use, or do we want to, for long-term wise, make that into the commercial area as well? Those are the kinds of questions we need to talk about. There, the land use plan that we have shows industrial along the railroad track, I think we probably would continue that, at least from where it is now, all the way up to Apple Blossom, as being industrial along the railroad track. Coming south from County Line Road, that County Line Road is that ran along?
Where is Hockland, sorry? Here's Wagon Wheel.
Okay, from Wagon Wheel on down to where the industrial park, you know, we've got the new industrial park, the Public Facilities Board purchased there on Kendrick, we need to clean down there as industrial land. So those areas. The pocket in the middle there where the housing is, where we have the conflict of names, I would assume we would leave that as some kind of a residential development along there. As you all know, the council overturned the planning commission's decision and rezoned that 81 acres as industrial. It was previously...
Uh, it was...
Oh, we did W1, I'm sorry.
Right.
Which is an industrial zone. It's just a down, a step down from the I-1.
It was, but that never came up.
Well, and I know that they were ready to propose that at planning commission meeting, but because there were so little comments being made, I don't think they thought it was necessary, so they didn't offer that and let it go to vote without offering the W1. Because we didn't have a lot of comment, a lot of questions about it, so. We need to change that portion of the land use plan and make it tie in with what the zoning is now. The area on the other side of Walton Street that's in Bethel Heights, has warehouses, commercial activity for the most part, all of that is, there's the crane place, there's the truck place on the corner, there's those warehouses in Long Avenue and down the street and there, so those are commercial, a lot industrial, I think we should leave this commercial on itself.
I thought we had all of this as part of what we adopted already.
No, because we didn't adopt in our land use plan anything that was outside the city limits, in the city's...
Sorry, and it's aligned with the current zoning with, I was thinking...
We filled in with the zoning with what we were converting it to, but the land use plan is not...
So why would the land use not match this?
That's what I'm saying. We would match it except we have some agricultural areas, and we don't put agricultural areas on the land use plan, because A1 zones are holding zones until there's a higher density use. We don't have any areas on our land use plan that are designated for agriculture, so those areas, I gotta talk with my hands.
My hands.
I can't talk today, I don't know why, I think it's good, you know? See, this area right in here.
Grand round 71?
Yeah, this area right in here, you know, Apple Blossoms are, I think they're coming all the way down to here. So do we want to include all of this to be commercial activity like it, like these pieces are in and now? We have this along Salt that's agricultural, but I would think we would want this to say some kind of residential development in here. Then we have all this area outside of this subdivision in here, do we want to keep that as a residential area? Do we want to continue the commercial in some form up along 71, this narrowing it straight now, and maybe do a transition to a higher density before you get to this lower density stuff? And then the industrial here, this is the industrial commission property that came out of Bethel Heights into the city, do we want to continue a swath of industrial along the railroad track up through here? Those are the kinds of things that we haven't blended in well. The, can you move this box? We've got the intersection that, here at the old 264 where there's some commercial along there, this is where the food bank and all that stuff is in there, there's some residential along here, and then we have this area. This is where the, the commercial stuff that's in here, there's a commercial lot here that's already been rezoned, do we want that corner to be commercial as well? Those are the kinds of things that, you know, we need to talk about, and we're really here to see if you guys have any other ideas different than what we've just kind of talked about in general.
If you have questions, you're welcome to chime in.
Yes.
I'll maybe look it up for you.
Okay.
I need to think on this one.
Okay. That's why we gave you a hard copy to take with you and look at it and see how you, how you see it. Now, we can get you a copy of the zoning map updated with the blended zoning of what we're transitioning to develop heights and that, we can send that to you too, so that you can have it too to look at. Yeah. Again, I'd like to, if we could, if possible, to set this up for a public hearing in December, which means we need to have this ready by, before the next work session, and...
Why, why are we pushing this through so fast?
Well, basically, we have a zoning ordinance that doesn't have a land use plan of access.
And is this the year as far as to get land use?
This is the year where we're doing the land use plan anyway, since we had such a COVID upset, we did get through all of the discussions with everybody that we needed to, to really make major changes, but we've got to plug Bethel Heights into that.
The reason why I'm asking for a little bit more time is, is I want to see what the election rates are from the asset sales tax permanent placement, because that has huge implications.
Oh, it does, and you know, that's one of the things that we talked about in 612 Bypass, is one of those projects.
Right.
That's on that next five year...
And then that 20 acres getting zones, or 80 whatever on it, I mean, that, that changes things a lot in that space, and then I've just got to think through as far as Wagon Wheel, because...
We can set the public hearing for the December meeting and just take comments. We may not be ready to move it forward and give you that thing, but I'd at least like to have set the public hearing for it for the December meeting. Our work session would be the 17th, and I think that's after the deadline for submission. Yeah, because planning commission meeting is December 1st.
And all the purples is commercial, correct?
Yes. So if we have a work session on the 17th, and we can agree to that on the 17th, then those can go in the newspaper that weekend, and that gives us enough time, no, that's not true, we have to have those seen on the newspaper on the 15th. I might go ahead and do those for the public hearing, and it may just present the ideas we have, what the files might need to be, and we need to get the process started.
You can move the work session back?
Um...
Make it, yeah, make it, yeah.
We could do that. We could change the date of the work session, of course, we can't have it on the 10th, because that's council meeting, but we could have it like the, the 5th would be, if we wanted to move it back to then.
Give the time and look at this and hopefully get it, I think it's that important.
Well, and I would, I would like to request that we go ahead and keep the work session on the 17th too, because we're going to talk about this optional form-based code overlay, and what you're going to hear in just a little bit is, we want to, to set up a work session on the 17th and bring in some of the stakeholders who are very interested in what we've been working on, and they see how it can work again, so you can have that. I'd like to do that before the holiday, because once the holiday comes in and we start losing people, and now we're into February, we'd like to kind of try and move that forward. It's after the elections, so we kind of hold off till after the election to get some of these things out there. So if you want to have an extra work session to talk about the land use plan, that's fine, we can try to do it all on the 17th, it's just going to be really busy that night.
I'm good, I may, I may be the only one that has a lot of the circumstances.
Well, let's just tentatively set it that way, okay, and then we'll bring it up at the meeting on Thursday about having an extra work session on the 5th, just to look at the land use plan update for Bethel Heights. Did you put the master street plan in there too?
That's ridiculous.
The other issue is updating the master street plan, and quite honestly, it has a whole lot less changes, because we already had...
Is there any...
Oh, is that in there?
Essentially, we're just updating location 265.
Right, because we already had Apple Blossom on as a major collector, we had Lincoln Street already on as a collector's street, we have, we have to update the location of 265 and it's about it, we're going to take that extra, the old will also, it should be a good alternative too.
When does Harper, what's the plan as far as Harper overpass?
It's supposed to go to bid sometime after the first of the year. They haven't done acquisition yet, and they've had some pushback from some of the property owners from the new alignment.
I would imagine...
Actually, quite a bit of pushback from the new alignment, so, I don't know, they don't have their permit from Highland Park either, because you're going to have one of those to cross over that, but I think it is the plan for it to move forward and go to construction sometime next year.
I have a question for you all. Did Bethel Heights have a land use plan?
Yes, they have one.
Was it any...
And it's pretty close to what I was just outlining, it's not much different than what we were talking about back then. Not much different than what the zoning is and that kind of stuff, we can send that to you too. Do we have a digital copy of that?
Of their land use.
Of their land use, because I don't have...
I think we only ended up finding a paper copy of that, wasn't it? I know that there was some stuff that, like, we still have access to, but I can't remember.
Yes, some of it was there, some of it wasn't, we're beginning to...
Wasn't in a book with the lock and key on it?
Um...
Accidentally hidden behind something else, yeah.
We took everything that wasn't moving, and then we could, to look at it and...
I love that IDA did a lot, I remember you're on him, did a lot of consulting, we have a good working relationship with them, we can, we can go back and get some of that stuff.
And I think they'll release it to us, technically they don't have to.
They all should take over that.
I, I suggested that too, and got shot in too, too far away.
Too far away, can't drive across the city?
I try. I really thought, I really thought we should have fixed up at the lodge and planning directorates at the lodge.
That tells me a lot, there's some people that need to visit the north side a lot more often.
Yeah.
We'll send them about.
But actually, the transition to the zoning, as I said, went easier than I thought. There was not as many major differences as I thought there were going to be, and a lot of it, I was telling you, some of it was not the way it was written, it was the way it was being used, was the challenge more so than the way it was written, and I only dealt with the way it was written.
And those citizens were really educated on it, that's what I was pretty impressed with, it came to that session, so.
We had a good turnout. I thought we had a really good turnout of property owners from Bethel Heights, and I had several of them tell me after the meeting, and they come in and send me notes, and said, thanks for coming and sitting down and talking to us, it's the first time we really had, could have had some really good conversations, and that helped too.
Well, and that's why I'm also bringing up as far as, when is the Harbor Avenue deal supposed to go through, and then, I think there's other areas that, you know, toward the Walton Foundation and what their future plans are for likability, walkability, things like that, I think they're going to be interested in informing those things, because, you know, one area in particular is with the New Nature Center that's on the verge of opening, and is, can we get a tour of that?
I have tried, they have not opened anything up yet, Kevin said he would let me know just as soon as we could have a tour.
Okay.
Because they were scheduled to open in late October, and they haven't opened yet. I don't know what the, what the new...
I've seen the pictures, it's more impressive.
It's really...
Pictures, I'll have to do it justice.
But the accessibility for that is just...
Of course, you know, we have, we have a project to extend Spring Creek from where it ends at Thunder Chicken all the way over to 40th Street to be paid for with CIP money or out of the city, and then we have a two grants from the Walton Family Foundation and a cap grant to do it across the lot, the Game of Fish Project. What's holding it up right now is an archaeological dig, they found some shards, and the Indian nations have to come in and look at it before it can be released, but they refused to come because of COVID, so Brad said today they were some kind of a categorical exclusion, but not many others just yet, whether that covers the archaeological aspects of it or not, and if we have an archaeologist on site, can we go ahead and move forward to get that piece built? So those, those pieces, at least getting it from the Greenway to the Game of Fish on a bike or walking is very well done. The 40th Street improvements will stop at the bridge, so you'll be able to come off of Falcon and go north to it on, on Wyden Street. They're down to the last couple of properties to be acquired, and I think that one's ready to go to bid as soon as the last few pieces have been acquired and start moving utilities, so we'd like to go to construction fairly soon too, and it's going to be a real mess if a lot is torn up, yeah, so.
40th Street's on, right?
40th Street's on, yeah, but it only goes to the bridge. So you don't get access over off of Wagon Wheel or the bridge, and that probably needs to be in the next, if there's an exit model program, that's probably something that needs to be clipped with that.
So extending, you got on title lift and all that?
No, there's, no, there's no extension in the turnwinds, because that's the backside that opens up to it, and there is that controlled access into it on that side for emergency purposes only.
Okay.
Yeah, right now. If you extend that parallel access road, you got to have another major bridge over the creek down there, and the chances of getting that done anytime soon is probably zero, not on a good day.
Good.
So, that's kind of where we are with that kind of stuff. So if y'all, we'll send you the blended zoning map, any of this copy of their land use plan, if we can, we can get a digital copy to send to you guys on that, so tentatively set it for the 5th to go over this stuff then, okay?
Okay.
Okay, moving on. That takes care of all the Bethel Heights stuff.
Okay, so I think most of you guys were here last time, we'll discuss about this with the government, maybe near for you, but essentially, what we are proposing is to provide the option to those that are outside the current boundaries of downtown Formosa to utilize Formosa in areas that are currently under the traditional zoning. So, here's a breakdown of these two areas, we split it between the Powell Street overlay and the Mill Street, kind of following the corridor of the Greenway, and what you're looking at is the proposed designations for building envelope types for these areas, and what we've done is to go through and look at these neighborhoods as they are existing in these properties, and, you know, look at the current use and what is most appropriate and what's most comparable within the Formosa code designations, and we put together these two.
Which just kind of serves as like land use plan for that area.
Right, yeah.
So, the way we see this happening is, we would create a special district called Formosa Code, optional landlord district, and we would come in and add to read up to that, and then this would guide type of building envelopes that you'd be able to do inside that, using all the standards we already have, so we're not creating anything new, but it gives the builder an option to be able to come in and use that form instead of traditional zoning.
So administrative procedures, definitions, and all those things just tie right back into the existing Formosa applications, we have it broken down, you know, evaluating based on the typical setbacks within the area, looking back at flats for historic reference, things like that, proximity to trail schools, you know, and making sure that it could function cohesively within the neighborhood to create place making and those sort of things, so, we can jump forward. This is, this concept property here, we've put together some models that basically demonstrate the possibilities on these specific properties with some of the neighborhood building times. So this is actually within the existing Formosa, but funny enough, this one is under development right now, actually in discussion with the architect on this one, we will not mirror this exactly, but nonetheless, just goes to show that this is, this property is being developed right now, this is not a private trade, so.
It gives you a different option in a higher density of development as opposed to what you could do with a standard zone, basically.
Right, I think we kind of have a knee-jerk reaction to, from experience and maybe conditioning to duplexes and multifamily, and we're most familiar with those three types, between the typical garden apartment duplex, a side-by-side duplex, and a single-family home, but I guess what we're trying to achieve through expanding this is being able to meet the need for missing metal housing by creating the possibility for all the building types to fall in between what we're able to do right now with E, it's not say things can incur, but it would likely require multiple variances to achieve that, as is in some of these areas based on the lot sizes. So this is on E-Wald Avenue, E-Wald and Dodson right here, this is, could either be designed based on the way it was segmented inside, has two duplexes with shared garages for two single-family units, but as is, this lot would not even be able to be developed as a duplex, a single duplex, so, just show students. This is on the same street, this is another subject property, shotgun house layout, the one on the right actually has two units, so it's two lots arranged, so, and then we brought them all together to kind of give you an idea with everything built out, you know, how this would address the street and kind of create the feel, so. This is over on Howell and James, this is a neighborhood type two concept, it's a mixed use with some stacked flats or row houses incorporated in, so you have a spread of different uses within one property. One of the things that we've talked a lot about is, currently, right now, in order to have multiple uses on a piece of property, it can only be done, as correctly gone wrong with that, and the minimum acreage for that is 10 acres, so, in essence, the problem that's created is that a lot of times we're pushing those developments out to areas where they can find parcels that large, instead of promoting, you know, quality infill on smaller lots within the city, so that's one of the goals that we would like to promote.
And that property is right adjacent to the airport headquarters, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So usually, we'd be putting that kind of development in that, if you can go back to that slide.
Yeah, sure.
That property just to the north of that is the airport headquarters, that's the existing trail, there's some more commercial development on this end, you get to the food truck court that's going in there, but that, it's a pretty good redevelopment at that corner, yeah.
Right. So I had some examples here, here is our typical idea of a duplex, what I had to say, it's a Dodson Springale for clarification, but it's something I found online, you know, typical garden apartment layout that we're familiar with, but I want to use this to kind of jump into the conversation. I talked a little bit about missing metal housing, well, this is, this diagram kind of breaks this down, in older cities, you see a lot of these building types, everything in between single-family homes and mid-rise, and really the reason for those, a lot of those were developed prior to existing building codes and traditional, I think we're familiar with, so, by expanding these areas, giving people the option to utilize the Formosa code, we are in essence allowing more variety of housing, we're also promoting affordability, so. So, here's a breakdown, this is, what this is showing you is, on a standard lot, 125 foot in depth, 50 foot wide, this is, the footprint here is about the same size as a standard single-family home, but it's showing you that in the way it's designed and segmented, the kind of density you can achieve within an area while still matching the existing character of the neighborhood and not interrupting that and creating a feel, and it's kind of fun, I mean, when you go back and look at some of these examples, existing examples in older cities, it's really hard to actually identify in these neighborhoods which, which of these units actually are duplexes or duplexes, et cetera, et cetera. And I have some examples here, we are more familiar with side-by-side duplexes, as we just talked about, this is a stacked duplex, you can see down at the bottom, I'll go ahead and, net density is referring to the density not taking into account the public right-of-way, and gross density is taking common area and public right-of-way into account, so, but how we loaded, eight to 25 units an acre, and as you can see, this could seamlessly integrate into an existing neighborhood. Here's some examples elsewhere, see the single-family homes to the left and right on this one, once again. So this is the one we're more familiar with, side-by-side duplex, once again, 50-foot wide lot, 100 feet deep, but still able to achieve 8... wide lot, hundred feet deep, but still able to achieve eight to nineteen units an acre, which, you know, as you guys know from experience, when we had discussions on multifamily development, you know, nineteen units an acre is actually will be considered a pretty high-density by traditional zoning. Fourplex, net density on this one, once again, fifty-foot wide lot, hundred and twenty feet deep, but net density, we're at twenty-nine units an acre. But still, we're on a relatively small lot comparable to those around it, so.
And that's with a detached garage in the back.
And that's with a detached garage in the back. You're always able to optimize more on space if it's access via alleyway. And, you know, that's not always going to be an option. In some places it's easier if you have a small block size and the developer is developing one entire side of the block, then it's easy for them to go ahead and install that alleyway and make the access from a side street. But that's not always an option, so, you know, that's different. These are all existing fourplexes.
That one's an interesting kind of concept, four doors.
Yeah, yeah. But once again, I mean, driving down the street or walking by, it would almost take, it would take two to see that this had multiple units within one.
The concept here is two up and two down?
That's right, yeah. And, you know, you can organize these in
Any way.
A lot of different ways. Unfortunately for us, within our Forma code now, it doesn't really specify distinctly which way it has to be organized in terms of the way it's accessed from, to, the access from the rear alleyway to from the front, one from the side street, one from a primary street. So there's a lot of different options and it really allows developers to be creative in the way they like these things.
Well, we already have examples of developers that are thinking this way.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I forget the gentleman's name, but, I mean, he went the extra mile to meet with each of us on the properties. And it was, I think it was that one that you actually, you needed to have a common driveway that could be used on both. Yeah, and now, I mean, the thought process there. He's, he's one that owns the whole block.
Yeah, right.
And we've had conversations with him. We've had conversations with some of these people who are interested in doing this, and we want to bring them to the table and let them talk to you how it is on the real world. I mean, we could write regulations all they want, but they gotta work out in the real world and see if people are willing to take that. And we've had some really good input.
Yeah.
We really have, yeah.
My point November might be better than.
Yeah.
The next November, yeah.
Right.
Well, they'll go much more expedient because we won't have a lot of arraignments and things like that.
Right. It'll be busy for this stuff though, because, I mean, depending on how we roll it may, it may require that we have an additional work session meeting just to get a nibble of this for an hour and see what people have to say.
Well, to win, to win, win for those that are existing property owners that, this drives their property value up at least. And they would be just looking for a change.
Yeah.
It helps us address the type of housing we need to make sure we maintain and develop.
The dynamic.
Yes. It's very important that we don't, and I always use the term, we don't price ourselves out of the market. We've got to have good quality housing downtown for everybody.
Well, you know, the reality is that in the existing, the brackets of the existing Forma code, I mean, it's getting to a point where there isn't any property to develop. And if there is, the speculative pricing has taken it to a point where it's not realistic for developers to be profitable. And obviously, we have some great larger projects that are occurring and we're super excited about this, but we'd like to start pinpointing and focusing on some of this smaller quality infill that can occur out on the fringes to remain affordable and achieve that.
Let me ask you this. Does this also open up the opportunity for public housing of, when you're able to demonstrate some of these capabilities, that it can attract as far as from a federal level? Because I know that we would love to be
We just had these conversations in the last couple of weeks about the ability to take some of the public housing and do some of this kind of stuff so that we can provide a mixture of public housing with this kind of housing. And, you know, the city comes to the table with the property that's owned by the housing authority and bringing developers to compartment with it. There are great opportunities to do some of that kind of stuff, too. Now, most of that's already in the Forma code area. What we're trying to do is get to the next step right outside of that, so we can do the same thing.
That's where I was going with it is that it could be an opportunity as far as a land slot.
Yes, there's some of the opportunities too. And HUD used to have a program called HUD Choices that allowed you to work in it. They have put money into it in years. But we've been trying to watch to see if that's coming out of anything, coming out of Washington. I haven't seen anything yet. That gives plenty money to do the development cost and the planning and setting all that up and, you know, we're just not there yet.
Let's keep bringing that up because you go in certain cities, you don't really know which is public housing.
That's what we really want. Yes, that's what we really want. And we have an opportunity in Springfield to do it right. You know, we didn't set the Forma code too big when we started because we were careful about making sure we didn't create some unusable organizations and regulations that didn't work. But I think we're seeing it's working well. And Austin said, all of that property is beginning to be snapped up and people are beginning to look just outside of that. We want to be able to have the same kind of possibilities with that.
And I say that only because that's what we're hearing right now.
Really, a lot, yeah.
We actually have people already that own property in these two areas, as you mentioned, Kevin, that are ready to develop. And in fact, they're waiting on this to develop because otherwise they can't make these more difficult pieces of property. It's a problem there for them, so.
No, it's not. We're working, we're working on there. We're working on there. He's no there.
Hey Roy, I know you have to leave here in five minutes. Was there any questions or comments that you have?
No, sir, thank you, Bill. I need, I guess, just a comment on the conversation we're on right now. I think it's wonderful that we're trying to find ways to do this. I can tell you, as being part of an investment, real estate investment group for northwest Arkansas, they, they are desperately trying to find what the next level up looks like because we, we all know how much land there is. We all know what that land goes for and we all know where that land is. And everybody in town knows where that land is. So if we have the option to bring something different in Springfield before Rogers, Bentonville, or Fayetteville figure it out or at least make a move on it, I think it gives you, right here is a jump on, on trying to develop Springfield with different, a different forward-looking attitude than some of the other cities. So I think it's great.
Thank you. We're holding it back, as you can see, for two small areas. We're not going on the other side of seventy-one. I think there's some possibilities over there, but we didn't want to, again, dive off into too much until we kind of figure out how long this is going to work.
I think we'd like
We've argued back and forth about.
Yeah, we've had a lot of that, talking about this in conversation yesterday, you know, spoke about basically presenting the language in a way to where it can be adopted to bring in future overlays within that and not have to start.
Yes, not have to reinvent the wheel. That's why if we create a zoning, a special district called optional Forma code, then if we have another area that we want to define like that, we can just plug it in there without having to do a whole ordinance amendment every time.
Is there a risk as far as making it optional?
You know,
We've argued about that some too.
I think ideally, this is a, a way to get in the door and let that development occur. And the hope is that the momentum, once that starts occurring, we may get towards, we may activate mandatory Forma code.
We don't have staff level to go in and do the detailed type information that we would be comfortable going in and making it mandatory. We just don't have the staff to do that yet.
So is there a way of adding language in there that it is optional until it gets to a certain percent?
Well, we kind of thought about that and I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what would be the percentage. Is it fifty percent? Is it thirty-three percent? Is it seventy-five percent? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. And
Yeah, but I, what I get concerned about with it being optional is somebody's going to, they know that their property value is going to hold and they're going to go in with minimum standards.
Well, and that's probably true. There's probably no way around that. I, I don't know. I don't have that. We've, we've
Especially with Art Estor, wonderful change in legislation.
I know, I know.
You know,
That's why we did it as optional, so it is the developer of that piece of property studying his own standards and we are not setting a standard for housing. That's why we made it optional to start. I don't know if we can expand the Forma code into an area without a hundred percent or whatever percentage it is in that ordinance to say those people agree to do that. That was the other concern because like, like you can do it with a PUD, but you control all the property. There has to be a, an agreement between all the property owners to put those kinds of standards on there. And I don't know if we can get it in a very big area. Optional is those property owners are saying, we want to do this because we want these standards and we want to build this direction. That's kind of the reason why we're doing optional.
I think that, I mean, the incentive for the developers, they can be more profitable by increasing density. They make the compromise, they're increasing the quality of their development. We're getting a better product, but they are increasing density and, you know, useful space. So that's the, we're hoping that that will be enough incentive to push them toward the
I agree with you.
Yeah.
But we still have developers in the area that are going to just
We do.
Put an eyesore out there.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, how we deal with that. And maybe we need to make sure Ernest is involved. We've had these discussions, but not down to that detail of how do we, how do we switch it over from being optional to become mandatory. And it's, history thinks it's the problem. Because what the boundaries were when that was adopted against that. Extending the boundaries is something you can't do unless you have that support of a property. That was the issue. So, I mean, we, we've still got things to do. We're, we've come a long way. I think we're going to have the, the support of the developing community to at least get this started. And to me, that's a big plus. If we have the stakeholders here supporting it, we can work out the rest of the details of how we make it much stronger.
I think that's what I'm, I mean, I'm on board with it. I, I just get concerned with the optional piece. And it would be good to have stakeholders that, let them have their input as far as the language and how it should be done. And, and look, I mean, it's, it's a harder road to, but, you know, that state legislation can also be changed too.
True, it can be.
When there's better options that have been put in place, had we all come to the table and actually sat down together like mature individuals.
We've had, probably have had.
Right.
Which way I thought we were going, boom.
We, we were on that track. We were trying to do that and we got high-tracked in a hurry over, I don't know. But we, we've got a good thing going and I think it's going to work really well. And it's a good example. We've just got to be able to extend it. How we do that is, this is our first approach if we can hit that zone. And I think it's important that we have the stakeholders at the table with you guys saying, we want this brought forward for Springfield because it's good for Springfield. It's not the staff bringing it forward. It's really the planning commission in conjunction with the stakeholders saying this is what we want to do. And I think that's a really strong message.
But we also do want the staff because
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, no, I
And I didn't mean it, we weren't involved. It's just, if it's just the staff bringing it forward, it's a different thing.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
But you guys have put a lot of hard work into this.
They put a lot of hard work.
But, and we want there to be, in overall intent and not be, you know, entirely in designing this for the developers. So I think it's important that all parties, you know.
My point is, is that you guys bring thought leadership, that people need to start recognizing, going, oh, wow, they really do a lot. So, yeah.
It's good for Springfield. I think it's really good for Springfield.
I agree. I think it's more difficult for Springfield, but, you know, a lot of this is coming to play just because of the money's there in Bentonville and then repeat that, but.
I don't know if it's more difficult or it's, we have a better opportunity to do it now than some of the other cities do because of what we're doing.
You're going to have a similar look to Bentonville, but you have a very different dynamic
That's true.
Of demographics.
Right. And that's what we need to maintain.
Unless you can afford a four to eight hundred thousand.
Yeah. So the plan is to set the meeting on the seventeenth to invite the stakeholders that we've identified. Do you guys got others that you wanted to make sure we get on the list?
They don't have some of this.
He's looking at building.
Oh, oh, he's, he's got a lot of
Oh, he's got a lot, yeah. He's got a building. He can do the Forma code area too with his first project. But he's a supporter of going outside this area and extending it on, for now, yeah.
Right.
So.
He's probably looking at how to do this for a five-month.
Or Clearwater, or, yeah. But, I mean, it, it, I mean, it's not things that we came up with on our own. We've done a lot of research just all over the country. And it's taking pieces that we know work from other places and put them together into something that can work in Springfield. We don't have to test it. We don't have to be the test model every time, you know. Everybody good with that, this approach?
Like it.
Yeah.
Think we have a chance just to
Those are two areas that greatly benefit. Those two areas, Paul and Mel, they greatly benefit.
Huge, huge amount of potential and we're just trying to play on that drum, drumming that up.
And for downtown to be successful, we've got to have people living in or around it too, for it makes it work.
Right.
You know, that's the other element. You can build all you want to, trails and, but you gotta have people. And you gotta have people on the Okay.
What else do you have?
Rick's been working really hard on a cheat sheet so that if you need to know what the setbacks are for each of the different zoning classifications and all, it's got one of these papers that you can look at. It's very colorful. But we're trying to help streamline some of that.
Can you just run that along, Charlie?
Yeah. And then, did y'all put in the, the new application forms for lot splits and all that?
No, we don't have, they're on our website, yeah.
Yeah, if you go to our website, the first thing that you'll see at the very top of the page is, what is it, October twenty twenty updates. And it just outlines that we're trying to streamline, we're trying to make things easier for us as well as surveyors, engineers and so on, as well as property owners. So maybe we are sometimes having a disconnect whenever the property owner and surveyor are not fully in the loop together on what it is that they are applying for, what it is that they're doing, what the timeline and the process is. And so it's all very, I like to believe, well laid out there as to this, this is what this is going to consist of. And these are the steps we're going to use because it's not just going to make our lives easier, it's going to make your lives easier as well. They're probably not going to give the sort of phone calls questioning as often anymore if they're making sure that their, their clients, their applicants are, are reading the stuff and making sure that they sign on the same forms with them.
Awesome.
And again, they're, they're on our website and on the forms and applications page.
And we're looking at trying to do an update every month of something that's being changed. I assume y'all have, all liked our Instagram page. These guys have been putting pictures up and things that you set at the table and approve. And as they go through construction, you can actually see what they, what they look like. And I think it's important to see that it's not just a paper one. It's good things going on in Springfield.
I have Facebook, but I don't, I've eliminated the rest because it's mostly social, so I'm not
Heard about it. I'll watch back in the election.
Well, I get a notice on my Facebook page when you get a poster. Yeah, so you'll get it there too.
Well, that's how you reach me. It's good Instagram.
Nice.
Nice.
Just trying to tell, you know, we, I've said for years and years and years, we don't tell Springfield story well. We're trying to tell the public what's going on and the good things that are going on and what's going on as the zone occurs and, and the good things that are going on.
Glad you hired these guys to approve of
I'm glad you hired these guys to improve on this.
That's okay. You know, I, I, I can't make a decision to bring the right people in.
Yeah, they're awesome.
You know.
Um, you guys had also talked about fee structure for our, um.
Leasing verification.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're not quite ready to fight that battle, battle of council yet. After we get in the council fee and we're, we're done, then we'll bring that up because it's always.
I will say as a component of that conversation, I would like to include for consideration some fee, either incorporated into the overall fee or separate item for the signs. Um, we see there's a lot of signs. I, I don't know why. They cost around thirty-five dollars a piece. Uh, so I don't know what we need to do to address that because over time, thirty-five dollars here and there and, you know.
And we're putting out a lot of signs.
Putting out a lot of signs, so.
You know.
They disappear, they get mauled and lost in shape or another and so.
It's unbelievable. Yeah. And these are not, uh, fully signed. I mean, these are.
Fifty percent.
I'm sorry.
Five, eighty percent.
Somewhere around there. When I drive up, there's another sign. It can be found.
Yeah. Sometimes I think it's intentionally taken out because we don't want the neighbors to know.
Yeah.
Or the thought is if you take the sign out, it won't occur or something.
Yeah.
What the heck are they, you know? Most of all, it's.
It's a sign up there.
Something that is a, a, a merely a deposit on the sign or just something that will incentivize people to make darn sure that that's something that we get back after that first.
It probably might be the way to do it because the, the goal is not to, you know, nickel and dime people. It's to ensure that we get the signs back or not. You know, the, the city, the taxpayer is not eating the cost of these signs that's being.
That fee structure that you had talked about in general says that loud and clear.
I, I think so.
It doesn't say we're trying to make a lot of money. Please help us cover our costs.
I mean.
Right, right. I think that was loud and clear when I heard.
Yeah, okay.
You guys, listen, you guys.
Back to your, your original point, we kind of cut you off when it came to the, uh, fee structure of the, of the zoning verification stuff. Did you have anything else?
No, I was just, uh, I'm glad you guys are still considering. Uh, you know, we talked through it. You guys kept a little hesitant at first, but it's more, I think, through it, it made any sense, so.
When, when the time is right, but not until after, not until after.
No, it's probably a good thing.
Until we see the new council and, you know, gonna have some new bodies and adjust to it. We are in the process of interviewing four engineering technicians to help give us another person to help make sure all the packets are together, all the information's there. We get complete packets when we complete applications, that kind of stuff. And to pick up, Diddy's not gonna work forever either. We got to do some, getting ready for the future. So, uh, we should have decisions tomorrow. We're gonna decide tomorrow.
Yeah.
We'll take an office, you're probably, we'll decide before at least, if we want to take office.
I need to buy her husband a gift for having dinner ready for her all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's a man.
Get us cigars when we find.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I need.
Pounder's Cove.
Wine and cigar, you got it.
Wonder what he'd say if I'd showed up for dinner.
I did.
They would say, come on over and sit down.
I did.
He's standing on the back porch.
Didn't, didn't take him a bit, bit. It's, it's really mean fact. You want to come over and talk? That's really what you mean. So.
She'll also preface it like, you might not like what you hear.
Yeah. That's the choice you gotta take. You gotta, you gotta.
Which is true.
Yeah.
It is very true. It's also much from Jay, it's from her.
It's secondary.
I believe that.
We will continue to go through the processes and try and streamline them and make them work better. Uh, that, we, the change in ordinance that we made that requires pre-application conferences, I think is really making a big difference because we're getting a lot of things discussed on the front of this. That we were missing before and then we had to table it. It, it's hard to table somebody, but you know, you guys aren't in the design business. That's not what you're there to table for. And they gotta get it done. And since we put out this new process on the lots for, how many times have we turned people away before? Two, three times.
Yeah.
You just gotta pay attention and do it. You're paying a professional to do a job and it's our opinion that professional should do their job. That's what you're paying. And we're gonna get to that point, kicking the screen along with. So, that's where we are.
Well, thank you guys. Thanks for attending.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, thanks for coming.
No, of course, yeah. Uh.
I think I'm getting really on, I'll, I'll try to come and make, uh, make it one of these, but then get pulled one way or the other.
Yep, yep.
Here it is two weeks before.
Yeah.
Probably go.
Hope more happy it was this one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably another hour worth of stuff.
Yeah, could've.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And we, we're truly, truly trying to hold it within our, because you guys have plenty of things to do. I have thirty, forty, fifty.
And, and I grew up, you know, on, um, near the Mill Street, uh, area. Uh, so I appreciate everything that's going on there. I love that area.
I do.
It, it has the bones it needs already. It just needs to be promoted and preserved and that's all. It needs to occur over there.
We, we'd like to buy a house or.
Well, you know, and we were just talking, Mike Gilroy's bought several places. He's done good work and then there's other buyers going in there, reworking some of the houses and they're really not. I mean, it, it's really taken apart.
Yeah, somebody else I talked to last night.
If you haven't had a chance.
Some crazy people that tell us, yeah.
If, if you haven't had a chance or if, you, you need to see the, the lost at the Watson building. Those are really nice. That's, that's a new addition that's getting ready to open up and, you know, it's, uh, a few more of those. I talked to Tom Lestrange last week. They're getting closed down here and they're not being closed. His term is never getting low. They got a lot of them still. They're really anxious. They are having people call already and ask about units and getting on a waiting list and they're, and they're not ready to open yet. So, they started on the fuels and supplies building. You can see that it's been, uh, you know, taken apart. Uh, Tyson's gone, gone a long way, but his building across the street down there. They're setting the new power poles today. We don't know that one. So there's lots of things that are, good things going on. We do have the, the keys to the Bank of America drive-in building over there. The SAs using to source some of their Christmas on the Christmas stuff. Uh, they have a proposal for how it can be used that's still being refined. We'll see that in the next probably six, eight weeks, creating a place for the farmer's market.
Yeah, that's gonna be the permanent one.
Uh-huh. Uh, Green, uh, Greenway Market's really what we're talking about, having it as a Greenway Market. So things like that.
For wood clearing, some large, naturally.
Not a lot, not a lot of wood clearing. It needs to be, the underbrush needs to be cleared out and kind of left like that. Um, the Luther George Park plans are supposed to be completed very soon. They're putting together, the DSA's putting together a steering commitment to start a capital campaign to, to fund the Luther George Park. I think there's, there's several things waiting to see where that's gonna go. I think once we know that's moving forward, there's gonna be some more housing that goes along with that too. So.
It would be a Tyson's great benefit to run a big check for that.
We don't think that. We do. Uh, we were talking about, we're getting a mural on the corner of what used to be Hewitt Street and Emma Street that's being paid for by the Walton, part of the Oz Art statewide Ark- Arkham, whatever. That group's coming in.
Art Venture.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Sure, Art Venture.
No, it's like Arcandus only is something like, but anyway. They have a, a, an artist that they selected to do that building and it's being painted this week. They're one of, they're doing three in Bentonville, one in Rogers, one in Springdale, one in Popolos, one in Stuttgart. And so those will be done in the next week or so. And then there'll be events and they're bringing in a reporter from the Washington Post who's doing a big roundup and all this going on in the natural site. So, that's going on. Working on another mural grant program to do some more murals or entertain. Uh, DSA's working on that. If you haven't been to, uh, October fest, they've had some pretty good music on Thursday night at Stanton. It's a pretty good turnout. The, uh, Victorat from, um, Bartwahn has been here a couple of times. He's a, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yeah. And then I think the announcement was made today there is a new chef company that will be opening up a new restaurant after the first of the year. Coming to, I think she's from Atlanta or, I don't remember which one it is. So there's, some of those things are going on.
So as far as the future meetings go, are you having a meeting here when you move or?
Um, it's kind of up in the air. We're trying to stay in the council room until this building is done. And then the question is, do we go into the training room and on the second story of the courts bill or the police building or meet in the Chalobine Hall or, I don't know yet. I don't know if that decision's been made.
As soon as we know anything, we'll close down the special meeting. We'll have it on our website just to make sure.
Chalobine Hall for the White Building?
Yeah, the two-story, yeah. So we may have it there.
Yeah.
Uh.
It was up until you get together.
Yeah, uh, we, uh, need to adopt a new calendar at the Merry Christmas meeting because we're to the bottom line of it. Seems like I just did that last week, but somehow we got to the bottom of, bottom line on that one too.
And then I got the email, I'm sure you guys did as well, as well as the Merry Christmas Springdale, that it's gonna be two different times of that day.
Yeah.
I guess we just.